Give you everybody if you could please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Quick announcement regarding emergency evacuation. If there's an emergency, they are exits to the back of the room and the side of the room. Yes, I see that. We'll let you know right away and get you out safely. First approval of the evening is for the Board of Education meeting minutes of April 9th. If I could please get a motion to approve.
Motion.
Barry and a second.
Second.
Jen, all in favor? That is everyone. Brings us to Board Member Communications and Announcements. Is there anything, anyone, might want to share? Oh, yes, I did want to say Mr. Dwyer is not here this evening due to work-related requirements. Anybody?
Okay. Since Xavier's being shy, I'd like to congratulate the mock trial team on their county championship and wish them great luck at the state competition. Really an amazing, amazing feat.
They beat Ward Melville, right?
They sure did.
Yeah, so awesome.
Undefeated so far.
Undefeated, very exciting win. This was fun. These kids, they want to win the states. Can you hear us? You can't hear us.
You gotta move closer.
Hello? Me?
The button?
Make this on.
No, you just shut it off. There you go.
There we go, alright. Yeah, so the kids are excited. We're heading up to states. It'll be the 13th, 14th, and the 15th. It is now an eight-team competition. Two teams from Long Island, two teams from New York City, and four teams from the upstate region. And these kids are hardcore, they're dedicated, they want to bring home the title for Huntington Blue Devils, and I think they will.
Yay!
Well, I'll let somebody else talk about robotics, but I want to encourage everybody to, if you're free on Wednesday evening, to attend the concert that will be happening at Huntington High School. It's always a spectacular bunch of performances for the honors ensembles. So it starts at 7:30, and it's at the high school, so please join us there.
I have one thing. Oh, we are, the Huntington Booster Club is still selling the membership raffles because the raffle, it won't be picked until June at the athletic dinner. We still are selling the $100 membership raffles, which the first prize is $20,000, second prize is $3,500, and third prize is $1,500. There, we're selling a total of 500 tickets. Like I said, we're, we'll be pulling the winning tickets at the athletic dinner in June, and I'm realizing, okay, it's April, so time is flying, so if anyone is interested in getting these, I have some, I have some tonight. You can contact Tim Pillion, and all the information is on the website.
Great. Thank you. I'm gonna let you announce the robotics. If anyone does not have anything else to add, we'll move on to the superintendent.
My congratulations also go out to the mock trial team, very, very exciting, county champion, undisputed county champion, I might add. Also, on the same day, you have one of those, those days where you just, you can't stop smiling while you have mock trial come in, and 10 minutes later, it may have been vice versa, the Huntington High School robotics team, Team 5016, 5016, won the chairman's award, which is the highest honor bestowed upon a participating team in the first competition. A lot of teams will win their regional events based on score, but this is highly renowned as one of the, one of the awards that every team should be striving for, and that is a team that has had its impact not only in the robotics ring, but also in its school community, in the greater, in the greater community, at the at-large community in Huntington, and even beyond that. This team has had a tremendous impact. It is all about inclusivity and making sure that, that every student in this high school and in this school community has a chance to participate and benefit from STEM-related program. And honestly, if you didn't have a chance to watch the little video during which the award was announced, I've watched it about, I'm gonna say, six or 700 times, and I cry every time, and I'm not a crier, but it really is an emotion-generating thing to watch. So congratulations to Team 5016, Huntington Robotics. They are going to Detroit for the world championships. I believe it's in May or beginning of June, but they are, they are pumped, they are excited, and they are, they are ready to go.
It's actually April 20.
Is it April?
April 26.
That comes up very quickly. Xavier mentioned the mock trial, or somebody did. We've just had a great month with robotics, mock trial. We have kids, National History Day competition going up to the state competition in Cooperstown based on fantastic regional performance, participation, and achievement in regional science fairs, at the Composite Prototyping Center. We have all kinds of great things going on. The arts, at some point, at the next meeting or two, we're gonna have kids here honored for their, their performance in high art showcases and various exhibits and competitions. It's just been, it's been a whirlwind of a month and a lot of great things going on. I don't know if we mentioned at the last meeting, was Cinderella throwing it up there?
Yeah.
It was, okay.
Yep.
National Issues Forum?
No.
That was the rescheduled event that was initially scheduled right before, it was in March, and this was designed to give school community members an avenue through which to discuss various viewpoints on some of the hot-button political items, i.e. gun control, things related to school safety. And I will tell you that our high school social studies department and social studies honor society, Mr. Levy and several teachers, as well as a number of different student facilitators, put together an event where, when asked at the end what they got out of it, again, as a superintendent, what better can you hear than, you know, we learned that even if we don't necessarily agree on every aspect of the issue, that there is common ground. And that is, that really is something that should come out of a well-run and well-planned forum, so thank you to those folks.
When we were watching from the side, I really felt like they were very active in the conversation, but the level, the level never got raised. You know, it, it all stayed calm, but you could see they were really actively engaged in conversation between different ages and different, you know, they mixed everybody up, so you weren't sitting with your friends, even if you came in and sat with your friends. Everybody got up and moved, so it was conversations with people you didn't necessarily already know.
The high school student facilitators, they were students running each one of those table discussions, and they did a terrific job. They, they kept it where it should be, and I figured exactly how Mr. Gould explained it, but it wasn't about debate, it was about discussion, and the idea was, you know, let's, let's see where we do have, not trying to reach consensus, that's probably not possible on some, on some situations like this, but certainly we can find commonalities and look for ways to potentially, together, solve a problem as opposed to add to it, and, and that's sometimes what comes out of a heated debate. This was not a heated debate, it was a very healthy dialogue and discussion, so again...
Very well attended.
Very well attended. And this was a make-up date because the first one was snowed out, so that cafeteria was full. We had at least 20 tables, big tables, full of people having this conversation, and it could not have gone any better. So kudos to Mr. Cusack and the staff at the high school for putting something terrific together. Thank you for that. Let's see here. April regents meetings were this week, a couple of pieces that came out that are, remain open for, for question. I'm gonna say one of the items that, that has been discussed among superintendents more recently is that new calendar program where the requirements have been changed from a daily 180-day requirement to an hourly requirement in addition to the daily requirement. And there is, in case you've, you've read the articles, there is some question as to how those hours and school days are going to be calculated slash determined. Now that they're including passing time in the high school total, and our day is longer than most, it looks like there are even more questions about how that hourly total is, is potentially going to be reached, so I'm sure there's going to be more guidance to follow. It's not something we are concerned with, but certainly something we are watching and will continue questioning. And the last thing I'll mention, just so the board is aware, we do have, coordinated by Ms. McCoy and a number of others, we have a technology integration showcase occurring at Finley on May 21st, and that's going to be an event that involves numerous school districts from the local area and beyond, and basically, we are inviting them to come see some of the great technological applications and wonderful things we have going on here technologically that are on the cutting edge. And obviously, it's a pleasure for us to show off what we have, but we also certainly would like to invite others to take advantage in their own way, shape, and form. If there's anything you want to add there, but it should be a nice...
It'll showcase all levels, elementary, middle, and high, although it's taking place at Finley, and districts will be invited to walk through classrooms for about 10 minutes each for about an hour, and then for the second hour, we'll be doing elementary and high school presentations in the library, and then follow up with some conversation and questions and answers, so we're really looking forward to it.
It should be great. And we also have, I was just reminded, Parent University at the high school this week, tomorrow?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow evening. So again, I think the word has gotten out there, if you have any interest at all, and you should, please don't hesitate to join tomorrow night. Okay? Thank you.
Great, thank you. Takes us to our first public commentary of the evening. Public commentary is limited to a total of 30 minutes, three minutes per speaker. You do have to be a resident of the district. Make up the microphone now, if you have anything you'd like to say.
I'm a teacher in the district, resident in the district, and president of the Teachers' Association. This evening, the Board of Education is set to adopt once more a budget this year that is over $400,000 below the allowable tax levy limit under New York state law. And I understand that we should not spend money heedlessly, but this district is not alone in needing additional resources to address the needs of students. Whether it's support for social and emotional needs, smaller class sizes, or additional resources for E&amp;L students, there are issues that could be addressed, at least in part, through finances. And if it's not done this year, I do really implore the board to consider these programs as we move forward and the ability to support them great, to a greater degree. Thank you.
Thank you, James.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, if not, we'll be moving on to the 2018-19 School District Budget and Property Tax Report Card.
Sorry, she didn't...
Apparently, that's not an option.
You know what, it's really nice and it smells really good. So I'm just gonna stay here, taking your seats for the rest of the night.
I thought she just did that.
She does. You have most of the time, yes.
Okay, so here we are, after months of hard work and discussion, we are at the time of the budget development process, where a budget is placed before the Board of Education for their final consideration, and as we discussed last week, this is, it's essentially the same budget that we discussed on April 9th just a week ago. So here is what it looks like, and as I mentioned, total's unchanged from 4-9, and as Mr. Graber had pointed out, and I will show a couple of things that this budget does include, after all of the factors were considered, the additional state aid influx, as well as some other non-instructional expenditure-related, non-instructional-related expenditure reductions, we are proposing a budget of 129,812,991, and that is, in fact, $475,611 below the tax levy limit. The tax levy limit, as most of you recall, is 3.14%, which is probably, it was a year where most districts had higher tax levy limits than they have had in years past, primarily because the CPI, the CPI-U is above 2%, so we started with that 2% in the calculation. And then for Huntington, going back to the tax levy limit calculation, we had a property tax-based growth factor that was a little bit higher than average, as well as some carryover from the previous year that moved our number up to 3.14%. And the difference that you see in the third column between tax levy and tax rate increases is more of a rounding error, they are the same number. But we are looking at right now a 2.68% levy increase, equivalent to the tax rate increase because we are projecting, as you see in the middle there, the assessed valuation to stay approximately the same. So in total, and in sum, we are looking at that total, 2.85% budget-to-budget, and a 2.68% tax levy slash tax rate increase. You saw these slides last week, they're a little bit modified just to incorporate some of the occurrences that have taken place hint, hint, since the last time we met, but I do want to point out that we do believe that the budget that we are discussing this evening does not shortchange any educational program or anything that we're currently looking at that is needed, and in many cases, wanted by the students and, and staff, by the programmatic requirements that, that we're addressing and the things that we'd like to include. So, not to go through them item by item, but what recent budgets have supported... Oh, how did that get there? County champion mock trial team. Chairman's award-winning robotics team. But again, without the support of the board and the support of budgets past, budget current, I should say, these things just aren't going to happen, and we'll add in the efforts of the staff involved and the kids involved, we have something going that's, that's, that's very special here. Lot of art and music covered here, scholarships and awards, and these lists will be posted with the presentation online, but again, we have, I think we've been very responsible in terms of how we've put our budgets together and have also taken into account the taxpayer burden, but in the way that we should take it into account. In this year's budget specifically, I do believe that we are looking at educationally sound class sizes at all levels. We are very careful with our, as you know, we've, we've looked at kindergarten class sizes very carefully and have been, for the most part, able to keep them at 20 or below. District guidelines are well above where most of our class sizes, if not all, will sit at the beginning of next year. Expansion of secondary elective programs, and more specifically, next year, we'll be beginning the computer science sequence and the virtual enterprises program, which are both generating quite a bit of excitement. We've already talked about the redesigned middle-level math program that will have a cost attached to it because we're adding that half-period in grade seven. Last week, the board was generous enough to approve the elementary science and social science program specifically last week, but we're also adjusting our social studies curricula as well, and some curriculum writing to be done this summer. Now that the fourth grade has moved back completely to the two, four, through six buildings, we're gonna be doing some work, and a lot of this is gonna be done in-house, maker spaces in the primary school libraries, elementary school libraries, I should say, and we are consistently looking at ways to beef up the innovation lab at the Jack Abrams STEM Magnet School, and as you know, we are looking at a capital proposition that's going to incorporate quite a few necessary infrastructure upgrades. So just a couple of things to keep in mind here, that tax levy, I'm gonna ask Mrs. Rogan and Mrs. Hebert to do a presentation on tax levy versus tax rate.
We are ready!
We've talked about, from the beginning, the tax rate increase and the tax levy increase being one of the same. They're really two different entities, and the reason that they are not different right now is because we are anticipating or projecting an assessed valuation from this year to next year that's not going to be significantly different. So a reminder that when your home is assessed, this is not the market value of your home, it is basically a value that's determined specifically for the purpose of calculating property taxes, and there's a number of factors that are taken into, into account, including comparable home sales, inspections, et cetera, and as you know, it's typically much lower than the appraised fair market value of a property. And that number below, the average residential assessed value in Huntington, approximately $3,430, that should clue you in that it is a much lower number than the fair market value. So based on what we're looking at right now, and by the way, sorry, Mrs. Rogan, just to go back for a second, the average is about $3,430, the median is about $3,150, and that's down from last year. Last year, we had a number of $3,600 as the, as the average residential assessed value. But using this $3,430 as a benchmark, the current budget with a projected, and that's why it's estimated, because we will not know the final assessed valuation of this school district until the...
September?
Could be September, October, in that area, in the fall. So we are projecting tax increases. We've been very good about projecting tax increases that are, if we're gonna budget it a little bit higher than it ends up, that's a much better situation than budgeting it lower and then having to go back to the taxpayers and say, "Well, it's a little bit higher than we had anticipated." But it's not exact science, and assessed valuation is definitely something that we can't predict with a great deal of accuracy. We do get the actual number in the fall, but using that average number, here is what the tax bills would look like in terms of both annual and monthly increases. And that covers the majority or a big chunk of the home values in Huntington. So as we have discussed, there will be three propositions on the ballot. First proposition will be the budget that we've just laid out. The second proposition will be the capital reserve appropriation, and this is an allocation that's going to come from two separate capital reserve funds. And the third proposition is the creation of a new building improvement or a capital reserve fund with a specific purpose and a specific source of funding that does not exist in the 2017 capital reserve. So looking at that third proposition, we can't use the 2017 reserve for one of the purposes we'd like to use it for, because the source of funding from the repair reserve is not built into the proposition for the 2017 reserve, therefore, we are asking for the creation of a new, so we can, in effect, take the monies from the repair reserve and move it into the capital reserve, so we can use it for, for, among, among other things, turf field replacement, which has about 10 years underlying it, at this point, it will need replacement in the next year or two. Neither one of those propositions will have any impact on the tax levy for 2018-19. One of the things we are doing in attempting to make sure that as much of an understanding exists among voters and parents, et cetera, community members, we will be traveling PTA meetings, having other conversations, so that we can get the word out as to what particularly Proposition 2 and 3 are all about. I did meet with PTA Council last week, and one of the things that actually came up was, well, can we have a more comprehensive list, because I didn't have it with me, of what that capital reserve proposition includes? So here it is. These are not luxuries, these are necessities, buildings that are 50, 60 years old at this point, and the most important emphasis here, and I have a number of bullet points just to look at, these are, the money is coming from an account where it already exists, right? So these accounts have been in place for a number of years, that 7.151 million already exists within two separate capital reserve accounts. That money cannot be used for any other purpose. If it was not voted, if the voters did not approve use of it for these capital projects, we cannot use it for anything else, it would just sit in those accounts and gain very, very little interest. As I mentioned, the need for 50, 60-year-old buildings is immeasurable, hence the big-ticket items here are three roofs on our primary schools, three of them anyway. We've discussed the fact that there is a major time lag, often between voter approval and when the State Education Department Office of Facilities Planning gets through their approval process, the bidding process, it could be years before some of these things are approved. They've, they've introduced some abbreviated mechanisms that have helped to a certain degree. We're also trying to, and actually, Ms. Ack, I'm sorry, Dr. Ackerman, and I've had a number of conversations about economies of scale. Well, there have been a number of bids on some of the project work that's already out there and approved. We are looking forward to realizing economies of scale because there's a number of companies who are looking to, to get this work and put these projects together, and the more we can do it one time, the better it is financially for us.
Just a question.
Yep.
The use of the 7.1 million, will that affect our credit rating at all?
It will not, it will not. The reason our credit rating, and I should have mentioned this before, our Moody's rating is as high for school district as can exist, and the reason it is so low is because we have almost no debt at this point. The last piece of debt that we have on the books is leftover from a 2006 bond issue, most of which has been paid off, and as long as we keep reducing that debt, we have been able to do a lot of our capital work without putting a bond in place, and that's where the, the rating would be affected. Use of our reserves will not impact it.
There's a PTA meeting tomorrow night, correct?
There is, I will be there.
So you'll be there?
Mm-hmm. We do get state aid on these projects. We, we are hoping that they don't come in at this high level, and we're also keeping in mind that we have a 37.2% aid ratio on our capital projects, so there is money back to be earned here.
Jim, can we get state aid on projects that are done in-house or only on...
Only if, only if they go through the capital project SED process. And also keep in mind, this is the first year, when you approve a property tax report card, which is also on tonight's agenda, this is the first year that the, well, the controller, they are looking for reserve balances, what we have and what we're using, and they don't want, if the money is there, it should be used, that's what it comes down to, to make a long story very short. So that's capital proposition number two, and the third proposition, just going back a slide here, would be to create a new fund primarily transferring $366,000 from the repair reserve to the capital reserve fund if it is, in fact, permitted with respect to voter approval for the purpose that, that it was intended for, and that's turf field replacement. Not to spend a lot of time here, but just so everybody's aware, contingency budget, and that should not say 2016-17, it should say 2017-18, should be the same levy adopted from year to year. There is a requirement that the administrative component of contingency budget can't outshine a combination of the administrative programs slash components together from the prior year. Equipment has to be taken out. The community must pay full cost for use of facilities, which is board-determined based on that schedule, there will be no reductions there. And obviously, there will be a number that has to be overcome, and if we had to go back to the current year's tax levy, it would be a required budget reduction of an additional $2.811 million, and that is not, that is not necessarily, well, it's not a small figure at all. And there it is in chart form, and that's beyond where we are now, not beyond the tax levy limit, so we'd have to cut another $2.8 million from the current budget as recommended. And that leaves us with multiple important dates, but two to highlight, the budget hearing scheduled for May 7th, and the budget vote and election statewide on Tuesday, May 15th. And I'll also remind the board at this point that next Tuesday, April 24th, at 8:30, we're gonna conduct the BOSI's administrative vote, which is quick, but still requires attendance.
What's for doing here?
Tuesday, April 24th.
Jim, I have a question.
Yep.
The proposed budget still allows families that are star-exempt to get their property tax credit relief?
Absolutely, and the reason being, we are well below, this would be in the form of a check, but a refund based on, there is, there are differences between families depending on personal income level, but because we are below the tax levy limit, absolutely.
Great. Jim, the, the use of the ERS reserves to get us below the limit as well also helped us, is that correct?
That is correct. Don't have that slide up here, could have put that up again, but last week, we showed a couple of things that brought our draft number three down. So I think draft number three, we're about $281,000 over the limit, we got the additional state aid, we contributed, or we, we budgeted more usage or appropriation from the ERS reserve, and we cut a couple of expenditures that were non, that were non-impactful related to instructional program, not, not related to instructional program, and that reduced that 281 overage by $756,000 and brought us to that $475,611 below. And just based on the initial numbers that, that have come in, I think we're at, or maybe slightly below, the median tax rate increase. A lot of districts have not yet shared their, their numbers, but this, this seems to be, this seems to be the trend. There were some districts that had a tax levy limit of over four, and there were others that were closer to two, so it really depends on where districts fell and what factors they had to consider in determining what their allowance was.
So effectively, if we had not done that, though, we may not have, we may not have gotten to that $400,000 number.
If we had left the, so we're contributing in this budget, $890,000 of our currently bud, of our currently-held ERS reserve monies. If we had kept it at last year's number of $635, our tax rate increase, and so that, that difference, and this is what I was explaining to you before, that difference, if we're not paying for the ERS expenses from the reserve, it's gonna be paid for from the tax levy. So that's gonna raise people's taxes, and if we had taken the $890 usage and reduced it to $635 as it is currently in this year's budget, the tax rate, tax levy increase would have gone up from $268 to $292, closer to three. So we are trying to, to manage and keep our, our tax levy increase or tax rate increase as low as possible by using the monies that are available to us in the form of revenue that... that is not the tax levy.
I don't have a question. I just have a statement about the use of reserves in general, and this harkens back to our conversation about the capital proposition. But that's what the reserve money is there for, and the state comptroller has made it a point that districts are supposed to use their reserves and ask for their taxpayers to support the release of those reserves. So I feel very, very good about the fact that we did it both to reduce the levy and also to, you know, ask the taxpayers to support the release of money that's already there to do the work that needs to be done in the district. So I feel really, really good about, about this budget that we're putting forth.
As do I. We've done things in what I believe is an instructionally, educationally, and fiscally sound manner. We will be using considerably more in reserve than we have, will have the opportunity to put back in. That goes without saying. And I will go back to our last state comptroller audit. One of the things that they suggested to us is that our reserves were underfunded. We have a board-approved reserve plan in place that is designed to guide us, also policy to back that up, that is designed to guide us collectively in where we can be in terms of caps on those, not caps, capital reserves have a cap by voter, by voter approval. But others, we are looking at levels that are aligned with what is dictated within our reserve plans. We've stuck with it. Now, here is a year where we're going to be depleting some of those reserves, and for good reason. We're talking particularly from the capital reserve, where a lot of important work needs to be done in this district. And we've, you know, this is not the first time we've had this conversation.
Okay. Can I get a motion to approve if nobody else has any other statements or questions?
So just, just so you know, if you look at that item on the agenda, there are two things combined in one resolution. There is the 2018-19 budget and the 2018-19 property tax report card. They kind of go hand in hand, so they would, an approval for one would be an approval for both.
I'll make the motion.
Okay. So I have a motion, I have a second, Xavier.
A second.
Does anybody else have any final comments? I just have one, and that's, I want to thank you, your staff, your administrative staff, everybody involved in the budget process for actually being able to deliver a budget 400 x amount of dollars under the tax cap. And being cognizant of where our taxes, our finances come from, which is the taxpaying community. I think that that's important. We did it last year. We're doing it this year. And you can always find things to add in a school district. There's always something that has to, something else that you could use. But to put together a solid educational program, once again, and the efforts to do so and come in where we are, I just want to commend you and everyone else for doing that.
Thank you very much. And I'm going to pass along that, that thank you to budget managers, principals, directors. Mrs. Akers on Yeoman's, why do I keep doing that? It's going to take some time.
20 years.
Yes. Yeoman's work in her office, really, we start in October, and it is, we pay a lot of attention to this and a lot of time spent, and the results, I think, speak for themselves here.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Sorry, Dr. Acker.
That is everyone.
12 and last adopted budget, ladies and gentlemen. 12 years.
You can sit down, Mr. Filansky.
Jim, who are you going to make fun of during budget season next year?
I'm afraid of, I'm not going to be here.
We can still make fun of you. Oh, he'll find someone.
It's going to be even worse.
Who are you going to reference when you go backwards with your slides?
That's right. Jim, you're going to have to give him some grief.
I think Barry might have to watch out.
I think he might be here anyway.
Yeah, sure. She's going to show up all budget season long.
All right. That takes us to curriculum and instruction. And Ms. McCoy?
It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approves CSC CPSC submissions as delineated.
So can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Emily, and a second?
I'll second it.
That will be Christine. All in favor? That is everyone. Moving on to personnel.
So I am asking for board approval of personnel items on schedules 5, 7, 16, and 22.
Get a motion to approve?
Motion.
Barry and Jen is the second. Anybody have any questions? All in favor? That's everybody. Dr. Acker, business agenda.
Okay. It is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through N on this evening's business agenda.
Okay, so everyone has that. Do we need to pull one item?
Oh, yeah, do we need to pull one?
I don't know. You said no, right?
No, I thought we said yes.
Oh, you said yes.
Wait, what are we pulling?
Just for a separate vote, that's all.
Which one am I pulling?
Just the donations.
Hold on a second.
Is it I, two?
The donations.
The donations.
Oh, I know. K1. K1, K1, got you, got you, got you.
Okay, so.
Oh, just, actually, just K1.
Well, I have to redo I through J and L through N.
Right.
Right. So, okay, so it is upon recommendation from the superintendent of schools that the Board of Education approve items I through J and L through N on this evening's business agenda.
Do you want to put in K2 and 3, or just leave out K?
I'll put in all the K.
You just can do K as a separate section.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah. Okay, so can I get a motion to approve?
What? What? She can vote on K2.
I can vote on the other two.
Okay, so K2, 3.
So and K2 and.
As well as.
Well done.
K2 and 3, right?
Right.
Yes.
This is everything but K1.
Everything but K1.
Everything but K1.
I'll make that motion.
All right, Jen, and a second.
I'll second, just to get it off the ground.
Barry, anybody have any questions? All in favor? That is everyone. And now for Kim.
Now, it is upon the recommendation from the superintendent of schools at the Board of Education approve item K1 on this evening's business agenda.
Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion.
Emily?
I'll second it.
Second by Christine. All in favor?
Wait, Barry, I'm staying.
Barry?
Right.
We can vote. You have to vote.
Right. Because it's a booster club. Wow. Okay.
Okay. I think that was everyone.
Abstentions?
Any abstentions?
There you go.
There we go.
Do I need to explain more? Oh, I should probably be making my announcement then.
You can, if you'd like to.
The only reason I'm not voting on this is because I'm also a voting member on the booster club, and we were approving a booster, booster club donation. So it's all good stuff.
That's right. In fact, I will piggyback on that and thank the booster club for their donation. Well, and.
Through the booster club.
Really, it's through the booster club, but it's really from several local restaurants, including Al Marco, Christopher's, Niroki, New York Panini, and Samurai. They donated $300 to get helmet wraps for the lacrosse team. Thank you to them. And we also, is that Lachlan? Lachlan, right? Correct. We want to thank the Lachlan family for presenting a donation of $500 to go to the Founder's Award Fund. And so thank you to them. And finally, we are accepting, we just accepted a donation for Mid-Island Therapy Association for $1,000 to credit the Jagoda Scholarship Fund, and we want to thank them as well. Thank you very much to all of them.
Jim, did you mention the Five Towns College Art and Photography?
I was more generic than that. About Park.
Yeah.
I did not mention Five Towns. That's the Long Island Media Arts.
Yeah, I think so.
Maybe we can do that during the closing.
Okay.
That takes us to our second public commentary of the evening. Same rules applies earlier. If anyone would like to come to the mic, you may do so now.
It's already locked.
Anybody have any closing comments they'd like to make?
I mean, I don't have a lot of the details, but we were talking about achievements of different groups of students, and I know that there were, oh, no, that's actually not even the one that, there was the Long Island Media Arts at Five Towns College, which were the photography students, I think, that competed. I don't know the details. But the other thing that I wanted to bring up was, if you haven't had a chance to see the video, and it brought me to tears of.
Thank you.
So we had a group of art students that participated in a program that is actually national, a group that is working with children who are Syrian refugees, reached out to art students around the country and asked them to draw portraits based on photographs of students in refugee camps. And then, all the pictures were collected and sent to the kids, and a video was done of it, which is posted on the district Facebook page, which I watched and then was weeping significantly, because it was such a profoundly moving, you know, there's a lot of things that make a lot of people unhappy right now, and there's a lot of bad out there. And this was such pure goodness, and our students participated in it. And I just thought, there is the hope right there. Kids in the United States brought joy and life to kids who don't have a home, who are living in makeshift tents and makeshift schools. So if you want to know the substance of Huntington and what we're all about, you've got to watch this video. So I meant to bring it up before and it escaped me, so.
Thank you for bringing it up, because I think it's, I think it's on the front page of the website today.
Yeah.
And the link is there as well, so please don't hesitate.
It's incredible. Incredible.
That's great. One more thing we have that we didn't mention earlier, in addition to the budget vote, we'll also be, the PTA Council will be hosting a meet-the-candidate night. We have three board positions that will be up for new votes, and several, it's Mr. Giacomo, we have Christine Bernacki, and Emily Rogan, whose terms are up, and.
Is Emily's term up? I didn't realize.
I think. I mentioned it in a roundabout way. Secret cross on the days on the calendar. There's many, several candidates also throwing their hat in the ring. So if you would like to hear what everyone has to say, 7 o'clock, Finley, May 3rd, come and, you know, ask some questions and get to know them. Yes.
I'll just add that Emily mentioned that robotics and the mock trial team will have them present at the May 7th board meeting, for obvious reasons. And Mr. Reynolds is also going to be, and he knows this, I'm just sort of bringing this back to my own light here, putting together a list of our arts students who will be honored as well. And he's done a terrific job with this in the past, and will coordinate that. And it gives me the opportunity, also, something I forgot to mention before, we'll be hosting the NISMA solo and ensemble festival on Friday, April 30?
The 30th?
Monday, April 30.
It's so weird that it's a Monday. That is weird.
I'm used to later in the week. But we have, we have been commended on so many platforms for the way that we host this,